Everybody's gotten quiet here. First of all, what do you think about sun today?
Yay!
You know, springtime in the Rockies and especially Conifer, you gotta love it, right? So, do you all have cabin fever?
Yes.
Okay. Well, cabin fever or not, I want to welcome you all and thank you for coming tonight. Hopefully, we get a few more people coming in the door here. A very special thanks to Nancy Staub, State Farm Insurance. She is our community supporter of tonight's town hall meeting. Thanks Nancy. And I'd also like to thank Conifer Jazzercise for providing bottled water. If you haven't already seen that, we've got water, coffee, and cookies over here. Now, I think most of you have already been to our town hall meetings many times, maybe some of you. But for anyone new here tonight, there will be no campaigning and no questions or comments during the presentations. Okay? We've got a lot to cover. At about 8:15 during our open house segment, you can ask all the questions that you liked of the presenter, so they'll be sticking around, use them up. And as you can tell from the second page of your handout, we have lots and lots of amazing speakers with an even more amazing amount of great information. So buckle up and get ready for the ride. So what's happening in and around Conifer? Our first speaker from CDOT, she said, "You know, I really don't even have an update tonight." And she was not able to make it, so she will not be here. But now we have two different people from RTD coming up. We've got both Martell Diles, Program Manager for Workforce Initiative Now program, and Julia Marvin, Public Relations Specialist, Community Outreach. So Martell, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Martell Diles. I work at the Regional Transportation District in Denver. I run a program called the Workforce Initiative Now program, coined it as the WIN program. The WIN program is a collaborative network partnership, which is a community-based workforce development program. We put this program together to build, obviously, what you guys have all come over to have seen, is our East Line, our A Line. It's opening, obviously, Friday and Saturday, but I'll save all that for Julia to talk about. But basically, what we do is we put individuals with certain skills or no skills to work on our projects. Not just on our projects in construction, but also within RTD operations and maintenance. We also do things within project programming. We also do project development. So there's just a wide range of opportunities within transportation in which we help individuals within the local communities all over the state of Colorado, to be honest with you. Come into our projects, learn, and then also develop on and move on, and they may possibly go on to other projects in other cities or states or within Colorado as well. So there's a ton of information over here about it if you know of anyone who's looking for a career change within whatever they're doing. Obviously, a lot of people don't know transportation has a lot of areas in it, so it's not just a bus or just a train, but there's a lot of other moving pieces behind it. We also have things like our security. We have a lot of opportunities going on there. We're developing other things in our mechanics area. We're also developing things administratively within our leadership as well. So there's a lot of opportunity within transportation. So tell everyone, tell them all, we have a lot of opportunity at RTD, and I'll be here to stick around just to talk about it if you have any questions. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Julia Marvin. I'm working at RTD doing public relations. So we wanted to come out tonight to let you guys know it's really exciting. We've got big news. You've probably seen that the train to the plane is going to be starting on Friday. So the train, the University of Colorado A Line, is going to run from Union Station down to DIA. It's a 37-minute trip with eight stations in between. The great news is it's $9 per person or $4.50 if you qualify for the discount fare, and that's from anywhere in the district. So the best way to catch it from up here would be to go down to the Jeffco Center Station, grab the W Line, and then go to Union Station and then transfer. And again, that would be $9. So we're doing a lot of exciting activities for the grand opening this weekend. On Friday, we'll have our grand opening ceremony, and then the University of Colorado A Line will be free from noon until 9:00 PM, so you can come out and ride it. And then Saturday, we're going to be doing station parties at each of the stations along the A Line. So that's the communities in the cities only putting on little parties, so it'll be fun, entertainment, art, food, dancing, music, lots of different things. And the whole rail system is going to be free on Saturday, so you can catch the W Line and then go to Union Station and catch the A Line and come check out the station parties.
Thank you, Julia. We're always up for a party, right? Okay. Next, we have Sherri Seymour. Sherri is the Patron Experience Associate for the Library System. Are you at Conifer or Evergreen?
Yeah.
At Evergreen. But you're going to be talking about Conifer and Evergreen.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Hello, neighbors. My name is Sherri. I am with the Evergreen Library, Jefferson County Health Library here in the county. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates about the new expanded hours that we have at the library. Thank you so much for passing our mill levy. We have lots of expanded services, lots of expanded hours, all of that. We'd love it if you'd come by and visit us. If you haven't picked up a library card yet, please come by and do that, too. We'd love to meet you and get to know you and tell you what we have going on. One of the current things that's happening at the Conifer Library is they have art going on over there. They have Chris McAllister. He is the artist in residence, and he is going to be teaching lots of unique and new things if you'd like to come by and see that. We'd love to have you join us for that. I do have some brochures that have the new expanded hours. If you'd like to pick up one of those, if you haven't seen us already, come by and pick up one of those. Check our website as well for upcoming events, storytimes, all that kind of thing. Also, April 30th, if you're interested in gardening, I know, think about it, right? We need some of that going on here. Margaret Road from over in Evergreen is going to come, and she's going to do a little speech for us, a little talk about gardening at high altitude on April 30th over at Conifer Library. So we'd love you if you'd join us for that. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening. See you guys.
Thank you, Sherri. And we probably need the speakers, or else I will let you know where these guys are so you can see them afterwards. Sherri's over in the corner over here. So, okay. Peter, Peter Barkman is going to talk a little bit about development and updates in the Conifer area. Peter.
Thank you, Shirley. In your handout, you'll see there's some sections in here that list all the latest developments. One of the things I want to say first is that the county, who adopted the 285 Corridor Community Plan earlier this year, has it up on the website. You can download it from there as a PDF. It's no longer available as a printed copy, but be sure to go get it off the website. That would be the Jefferson County website, planning and zoning. Recent developments in the county or in our area, there have been quite a few community meetings going on. I want to just say a few things about that. The community meeting is at the first show for a proposal for an application. So the applicant puts together a community meeting to let people know what's going on. You need to realize, this is just the first airing. It's not the end result. It's also very important for people to attend those, because that's your chance to find what's being thought about and what's going to go forward. It doesn't mean that that proposal's actually going to make it the whole way through. It's the first step, but just be aware that this is kind of the first airing, and a lot of them get changed. So just from what you see, it may not be what it's going to end up being, but it's the start. The other thing that we've seen quite a bit of lately, but I don't put them in here, there have been a lot of grading permits. There are GP, it would be a case number with a GP, or minor variations, that's an MV, they come through. There are too many of them to list here, but also usually just single properties. Those, there have been a lot of signs going up lately for those. They're the yellow signs. So that doesn't mean there's a development. It may be that somebody's applying for a grading permit. To me, that's a sign that a lot of people that have been sitting on their lots, wondering what to do, are finally getting around to building. So I sense that it means we're going to see a lot of new homes going up in the area because of the improving economy. But I don't list them in there, and you may see things come up periodically. The other updates, the MLSE Catholic Retreat Center, this is one that started out as a community meeting. It is now morphed. It was Saint Malo, it's morphed into the MLSE Catholic Retreat Center. They're now in their first referral stage. So this is one that started out as an application community meeting and now starting to move forward. The other one is this Placations Picnics to Go, which is out on Ridge Road. That's had a community meeting, but nothing, we haven't heard anything of that. Things like that may take years before they actually turn into a real development, but we try to keep tabs on them, and as soon as they come through, we put them in here. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So probably a lot of you are wondering what's happening with the Yellow Barn, and Craig Marks is here tonight someplace. Craig, where are you? Craig Marks is here tonight to tell you a little bit about what's going on with the Yellow Barn. Craig.
Hi. It also may be what's not going on with the Yellow Barn. But anybody here not know what we're talking about when we say Yellow Barn? Okay? We need to talk. But it's a community asset, and right now, there's four things that are going to happen to it. It's going to be torn down. It's going to be moved. Go ahead, Neil. It's going to be moved. It's going to be stabilized and closed, so it's just there, it'll be there. Or be redeveloped into a community asset that can be used both for commercial and for community use on the upstairs. If anybody's been upstairs on that, these type square dances up there, it's an awesome, awesome room that should be kept for the community. I'm just asking for anybody that has any ideas. There were, I pulled some minutes out from 2005. There's a lot of people in this room that were at those meetings, say, the Yellow Barn. Some of them are dead at this point, some of them passed on, some of them are here in the room. This has been going on for decades. It is now time for this community to decide what they want to do with this asset going forward. So if anybody, I'm going to give you my phone number right now, because this was, I was sort of a late attraction here, so I didn't, I don't have anything to hand out, but it's 303-880-2600, looking for anyone. Thank you.
And if any of you have not been in there, it's really not stable enough to go in right now, but it is really cool. So something to save. So if anybody's interested, give Craig a call. Okay. Next, we have Beaver Ranch Community Park. And as you all know, or maybe most of you know anyway, Jim and the community are going through a master plan process right now. Tom O'Connell, who is Board President, is going to tell us a little bit what's going on there. Tom.
Thank you, Shirley. I trust that many of you know where Beaver Ranch Park is.
Yes.
It's down Poxton Road a little bit from 285. How many of you know that Beaver Ranch is currently being run as a nonprofit organization? Some of you do. So basically, we're supporting ourselves through our own means of revenue sharing. I have more information about this over at the table. Yeah, here's a map of where we are. Well, it's down Poxton Road. Yeah, let's just go to three. So in this master plan program, we're partnering, of course, with Jefferson County Open Space, and then the National Park Service has a special division, Herbals, Trails, and Conservation Assistance, and they've been immense help to us in initiating this plan. Of course, we're going to create a new vision for the park. We need to identify our project goals. As some of you know, we are, in some ways, a gathering place for the community in some of the events that we have there. For some, it's a recreation destination. Denver Zip Lines operates a zip line there. Destination Biz has a disc golf course, and just all the features of a normal open space. In the conceptual plan, we have to identify new uses for the park that the citizens of the area will want to see us have. Megan, you put in other elements, I really don't know what you mean there, so let's go to four. Thank you. So in May, of course, we're going to get with our focus group people, and these are people that, you know, these could be churches, schools, recreation groups, whatever kind of organizations there are up here in the mountains. We'll get together with those groups to find out what they would expect us to have. We're going to do the preliminary programming and design shred. Let's see, that means something like final goal or final project, create the conceptual plan. In August, we're going to do a reach out to the community, go to the community, have the community come to us, because we need to communicate with the community so they can tell us now what they're thinking of. Then they'll, we'll be writing the master plan, refining the conceptual based upon the community feedback, and that is just one of the most important parts of this whole program, is to know what you, the people, expect us to have. Then you can see that we're going to refine the master plan and develop the implementation, and then we go to the plan review. So that takes care of the presentation, and like I said, you can come over and get some more information from me right over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Now, we have Melissa Baker and Sharon Trock coming up to talk about the, what's happening with the Conifer Chamber, and there's always so much. So here they are.
Thank you, Shirley. Be neat, everybody. So first up, we have a mixer tomorrow night, and mixers aren't just for businesses, they're for everyone, so please come. And tomorrow's a special one. It's going to be at Elk Creek Fire Department, and you can come and see the new remodel that they have done with the building, thanks to the mill levy that L. V. passed, and I know they're grateful for that. So from 5:00 to 7:00, come on in. It's $5 for our members, $10 for anyone else that gets you food and two drinks, and you get to check out the station and meet some firefighters, and it's going to be a good time. So we want you to come to that. And then I also want to remind you, please, check out our Foothills Adventure Maps, download it to your phone. We've got information on the table back there, our directories, and we have a bunch of Facebook pages that you can like to find more information for what's going on around here. And for the next thing to talk to you about will be our incredible Elevation Celebrations coming up this summer, and I'm going to let Melissa tell you all about that one.
So we're a little far out, but since we don't have another town hall meeting until this fall, just wanted to give you guys a heads up. Elevation Celebration will be July 30th and 31st. That is the last weekend in July. It is a free event, and it has all kinds of fun things. We have two stages full of live local music, lots of entertainment, kids' activities, bounce houses, obstacle courses, petting zoos, all kinds of fun. There will be a beer garden and beer tasting, and just about anything fun to do in the corridor, you can come and do that day. Vendors and food, and again, it's free, so we encourage you to come out and meet your neighbors and have a really good time. That's what this event's all about. So hope to see you July 30th and 31st. Again, it's Elevation Celebration, and this year, our title sponsor is Sano Animal Hospital. So thank you, guys, so much. Look forward to seeing you in July, and hope you have a great summer.
To add a little bit to the Elevation Celebration information, Conifer Area Council is actually involved in that also. We're involved with the 5K and 10K Run Walk, which is actually on July 30th. The Elevation Run is a 5K-10K, a walking event to raise money for Conifer High School, athletic improvements, and the Conifer Community Trails. So the 5K course takes you around the scenic Aspen Park neighborhood of Conifer at an average elevation of 100 feet, or at the 10K distance with the detour through Myra Ranch Open Space Park. After the race, there is a full day of free entertainment on Sutton Road, and that's just what Melissa was talking about. So July 30th and 31st, be sure and come out for that. Okay. Next, we are going to start talking about emergency awareness. And first up to talk is Jefferson County Animal Control. We've got Jennifer Dow, Animal Control Officer. Jennifer.
Hello. I'm Jeffco Animal Control, and just wanted to let you know, whenever we get in an emergency situation, we have a procedure where we call people out, we get staging area going, where we call Jeffco Heat to do the large animals, animal evac to do the small animals. We find a safe staging area as close to the fires we can be with it, being safe, and then we wait for calls to come in, and we go out, and for people who can't go back to their house to get their animals, we go in for them and get their animals for them. So it's good to have a plan for your animals to be evacuated, and two things I can't stress enough is have your address posted where we can see it even two or three times, so when we're out there and we're busy and we're trying to be fast getting animals out, it's good to know that we can find your house. And also, with large animals and livestock, if you can have them trained to get on and off the trailer, it's very helpful, because we have, you know, our skilled people, but sometimes it's hard when you can't, they're already stressed because there are strangers at their house, and it's good if they are already used to getting on and off the trailer. So that's pretty much it, and I'll be here to answer any questions if you have, and I will end off with Scott of Jeffco Heat.
Good evening. I'm Scott Halliday. I'm the founder and emergency coordinator for Jeffco Heat, that's Horse Evacuation Assistance Team. We've been moving the large animals in the mountain area since 2000, and basically, back then, they didn't have anything planned. It was campus, neighborhood, load up your trailer, document them. We were first taking them up to the top of Shadow Mountain, my property, doing the best that we could do to document them, get in touch with the landowners, and later on, in the High Meadow fire, we started getting the fairgrounds established for the large animals. So basically, there are three large animal transportation teams up here, evacuation teams. We'll pick up the horses. We've got a form that we fill out, we document where they came from, what the horses were, and we take them down to the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds is staffed 24 hours a day with people that are caring for them and watering them. There is a pet either there or on standby, the brand inspector is there. Again, like Jen said, teach your animals to load. It goes a long ways. We've only got a certain amount of time. The animals are freaked out, there's fire coming, they can smell the smoke, so it helps us out a lot if you are a large animal owner, that you teach that animal how to load. One of the biggest things, problems that we have is traffic. You know, a lot of folks up here now work down in Denver, and smoke hits the air, it's advertised on TV, next thing you know, everybody is trying to make this mass exodus up here to take care of their homes, their animals, or whatever. That's stuff that you should have already done. Mitigate your home, get that taken care of, but the best thing that you can do is pick up the phone and get ahold of Animal Control 911. Let them know that you do have animals at that address, and don't try to come up here and do it. Ken Hecus, AV, has he got a minute?
I'm with Animal Evac evacuation, and we do small animals, just like with Heat, except dogs, cats, anything small, same type thing. One thing wasn't mentioned, and be sure to get a reverse 9/11 on your telephone, and mostly on your cell phone. Again, like Scott said, that when something happens, they'll block off the roads, and you will get back to your house. Thank you.
So these are all things to be aware of if there is an emergency, a wildfire, a flood, you know, whatever there may be, where you need to, you know, get your animals taken care of. Next, I have Lauren, sorry, Lauren Droual, Board Vice President with IMHS. Lauren.
Hello, everybody. Give us a second to get set up. So hello. Thank you for having us. How many people here have never heard of the Intermountain Humane Society? Okay. There's only a few, but I'm going to talk to everybody, like I'm talking to you then. Assisting me besides the Conifer Area Council, Kurt, is our other board member, Jennifer Miller, and she will be here over at the table with our volunteer coordinator, Lisa, after this presentation tonight. Want to talk to you a little tiny bit about animal preparedness, but mainly about IMHS and about being a member. We at IMHS cover not just all of Park County, but part of Jeffco as well, and we go into Douglas and Chaffey and Summit. So we're huge. We do a lot. This is how much we did last year. If you can't see those numbers, that's really impressive amount of animals saved last year, and we're tiny. We're smaller than just this auditorium. We, do you want to expand into animal evacuations? We don't have the resources right now. If you are interested in helping us with that, growing our different programs, maybe donating a trailer so that we can actually do horse, llama, packer type things, that'd be great, but that's not what we do now, so you already heard about the animal evac team back there. What I'm here to focus on tonight is about being a member. How many people here are volunteers or have donated ever to IMHS? Look at that. That's what I like to see. How many of you are members? Yeah, that's the problem. Most people don't realize, IMHS is actually a membership type of organization, and we love your donations, but we never know how much we're going to get, right? If we have a membership, and here are the membership prices, the breakdown, we have yearly versus annually, I mean, versus membership for a lifetime, it's a really good deal. You get benefits. We're always expanding our benefits, and we're always looking for more ways to work with the community to give more benefits, but the main thing is that if we have more members, we have a dedicated amount of bodies who are saying, "I'm committed to bringing you this amount every year," then we have a nice base. So it's all about that base, and then we can expand to other things. So now I'm done talking about that in general, because all you want to look at is cute animals, right? This animal is available now. This is Bigfoot. She's a sweetie. And if you ever wonder why we can't bring animals here and why this has to be good enough, talk to Sherri. Tallulah is available now. You just keep going through. Koba is already gone, but he's adorable and I wanted to show you. Macaroon, already gone, but that face cracks me up. And that's our artistic view of Omni. He is available now. So as I said about the membership, this membership drive is going on now. We have membership forms over on the table, but pretty much, you know, you need to give the work nowadays. It's all on our website, imhs.org, and we'd love to have you as a member. This is going to be our membership meeting, May 17th at Taspin's. All members will be honored. You're going to get to vote and do other stuff, we'll have food, and if you're not a member now and you decide at the last minute, you can buy a membership there that night at Taspin's. And we are always looking for more resources. Besides money, we need people. We need people on our board to join me and Jen. We need people on our committees, and we actually have some staff spots right now. So we'll be over there for the rest of the evening. We're selling some cars, we've got the membership stuff, we've got lots at our table. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mount Resource Center. Mount Resource Center does so much up here, and I didn't realize that they actually get involved when there's an emergency also. But here's Lauren McLeod. She's the CEO and Executive Director. She's going to talk a little bit about them.
Thank you. Mount Resource Center is a nonprofit organization, community-based. We've been here since 1990. Last year, we served over 3,000 people in need. We offer workforce services, veteran services, pantry, food pantry, early childhood education, and in case of emergencies, we also help people with their clothing. And in case of emergencies, we also help people with their clothing, housewares, if they've had a total disaster, transportation, housing, mortgage, rent, utility assistance, and mental health support. So we really are a hub in this community for a lot of our partners. I know during the Lower North Fork fire, we were really the hub of that whole disaster. We really worked with the Salvation Army, Red Cross. We received so many donations from the community that were given out to the victims during that time. So just please remember us, if there is a disaster, that we are here and ready to help in any way that we can. We have 167 volunteers last year that gave over 10,000 hours. So if any of you are wanting to become a volunteer and helping us out, our booth is back there and we have a sign up seat. We're always really in need of donations, especially for our food pantry. A lot of people don't realize that clients, if they're on food assistance through the state, they are unable to buy personal hygiene items such as deodorant, toilet paper, some of those things that we take for granted. So if you're ever able to provide those as a donation, we really do appreciate that as well. Some of the upcoming events that we do have, I'd just like to put a shout out to that, is that we do collaborate with Echo Evergreen Christian Outreach Center for a job fair. So if anyone in the room is looking for a job, please look on our website for the information. That will be held on...
May 3rd.
May 3rd, thank you. And we have a fundraiser coming up and it will be extremely fun. It's all a theme around Kentucky Derby. So if you're into the Kentucky Derby, please join us for that. It's at the Evergreen Elks Lodge, $40 for a person, $70 for a couple, and it's going to be a fantastic time. I think that's all I really would like to share with everyone. And please visit us at the back and we will give you more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. I am going to add one more person here to the mix. I know we needed one more speaker.
We, how much time?
She's just going to talk about just a couple minutes, but very important, Preparedness Coordinator, Jennifer Warrenken with Red Cross. Okay? Jennifer?
I guess. I'll try not to get too many germs on this thing. Good evening, I am the Mile High Preparedness Coordinator for the Red Cross. I teach a lot of the classes for this around the area. But one of the things I wanted to tell you, given what I've been hearing, is that Red Cross shelters cannot accept your small animals unless they are certified service animals. And unfortunately, emotional support animals do not qualify for that. There's a whole lot of health issues for that. We try very hard to set up a shelter for those of you who bring your animals near or on the same grounds as our people shelter, but we cannot have them in the same building. It just creates a zillion health problems. Secondly, if you're called out and you do not have your medications with you, as long as you have copies of the prescriptions, we can give you three day supply, three day supply of your prescriptions. But, but we need to have there, so there's a few controlled ones we can't do, but for the most part, if you can prove that you're taking it, we can give you those medications. And the third thing, I forgot what the third thing was. Those are the two things that I really needed to tell you, was shelter stuff and the fact that we could do your medications. Thank you.
Thank you, great information. Okay, obviously emergencies are terrible, you know, flooding, wildfires, anything else. The next portion is going to be talking more about how we can be prepared for those emergencies and hopefully stop those emergencies from happening. So first of all, we're having Brett Roller, who is the Jeffco slash collection coordinator, talk about the Jefferson County slash collection site program. Really good to do. Brett?
Hi, everybody. Like Shirley said, my name is Brett Roller, and I'll keep this really short and sweet. Remember the good old days of having like three weekends a year to get your slash dumped off somewhere right around here? So this year, we're going to have 27 collections somewhere in Jeffco, every weekend. So every weekend in Jeffco somewhere, from later next month, May 21st through November 6th. So every weekend, we move around different sites. The main thing you need to know, and I've got a ton of these cards in the back, is the jeffco.us/slash website. So it's, I've developed that way of sending the forward slash thing, otherwise it's slash slash. People don't get it. But swing by, right back to this table, grab a postcard, grab 10 postcards, keep one for yourself, give nine to your neighbors. I was joking, it's a really nice way to encourage your neighbor to do stuff instead of, your yard looks like, you know, looks awful, clean it up jerk. Instead you can say, have you heard of this program? And hand them a card and maybe get them to do some mitigation work too. Everything you need to know on that website, location, there's a list, a calendar, a little pop-up, every one of those is a link, you can click on it, it'll show you a Google map of where everything is, all the fees, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, all that's listed on that website. It's very, very easy. My contact information's also on there. If you have a specific question, give me a shout and I'll try to get an answer to you right away. We also in the back have some bigger posters, versions of the postcard. If you have an HOA group, a common mailbox area, somewhere you can hang these, grab a couple of them and take them with you, post them. We've put together a really good program and now we're in the phase of trying to get the word out, which is, is pretty tough. So help us spread the word, pass the postcards out, hang something up, and let people know that the slash collection program is bigger and better and more robust than ever before. So lots of opportunity to get rid of stuff. So I'll be back here if you have any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks Brett. And the back of your, or the back page of your handout tonight is a list of all of the slash sites, collection sites. So put that on the refrigerator and so you won't forget. Okay, next we have Jeff Ravitch, who is the North Fork Watershed Coordinator. He's with Coalition for the Upper South Flat. Jeff?
Good evening, so I'm Jeff Ravitch from the Coalition for the Upper South Flat. We are a nonprofit watershed group that works in pre-fire mitigation, post-fire restoration, river restoration, ecology, and science. We are here to announce that we have actually succeeded in finding a permanent slash site in the area. So we were going to be opening up towards the end of May, but the snow has sort of stopped our road construction right now. It will be located at the top of Crow Hill, right off of 285 on the County Road 72 exit by the salt, or the T-ball parks. We will be open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday weekly through probably a similar period. We will probably be charging a similar amount, we're still working out the specifics and consulting the Magic Gate Ball to make sure that we don't have, we have the right place, we don't want to be competing with Jefferson County. We want to actually just be another resource that allows people to be able to get rid of the slash that is needed in order for people to do their own work on their properties to protect it from the risk of wildfire. So just wanted to come out and let you know that that was coming and thank you for having me here.
Thank you, there's all kinds of opportunities, so take advantage. Next we have Nathan Beckman, he is Forester for the Colorado State Forest Service, and I think you have a presentation for us, right? Okay, here we go.
I have a quick slide presentation here as well. So my name's Nathan Beckman, I'm a forester with the Colorado State Forest Service. Out of the Gold Office, we serve Jefferson, Clear Creek, and parts of Park County. Few things I'm going to update you on, first off is the Stoughton State Park 2016, 2017 project we have going on. Also some wildfire mitigation publications, I'll briefly go over those for your information, and then also some information on cost share opportunities. So first thing I'm going to go through is the Stoughton State Park. The Colorado State Forest Service has worked with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife to design, layout, and soon implement a project going on on the state park. We have two different units going on, one of them is the Dynaage property. That one is a total of 64 acres. And then also the Mason Creek East parcel with a total of 45 acres. So we're looking at doing a total of 109 acres of work on Stoughton State Park. What we're doing here is, both of these units are designed to reduce fire severity, intensity, reduce the fuels, crown connectivity, and ladder fuel. So wildfire mitigation project along with a variety of other things going on on this, this property. And this is started, scheduled to start in July. So if you want some more information, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. I'll be in the back after the presentation. Next one I'm going to go over is some wildfire mitigation publications we have. Just kind of a brief overview of these. First one is Protecting Your Home From Wildfire. This talks about creating defensible space around your house. Good publication if you're interested in defensible space around the home. Another good one that we have is Fuel Brake Guidelines For Forests, Subdivisions, and Communities. That one's good for organized communities if they want to develop some fuel breaks, kind of do some guidelines for, for fuel breaks. We also have Firewise Construction publication, along with Fire Resistant Landscape and Firewise Plant Material publication. All of these publications, along with other publications about insect disease, other issues, can be found on the website, which is www.columbarstate.edu. I also have hard copies of all these publications in the back. Be more than happy to talk to you about them. And then also, we provide technical assistance for any of these as well. If you want us to come out, we can, more than happy to come out and talk to you about all these publications and things around the home. Last thing I'm going to hit over real quick is potential grant opportunities, kind of going out with this. We can help assist with federal, state, non-governmental organization and local grants. Kind of a few things with these grants. A lot of them are out for fuels reduction and treatments, also for forest restoration, which can directly correlate with fuels reduction. Few things about these, they're highly competitive grants, they're organized. What we, what we kind of need before looking at grant opportunities is having goals and objectives laid out on the ground plan, having that kind of thought out. Also, forest management plan is highly recommended for these grants. It's not required, but it's always a good thing to have. We can help put you in contact with, with someone if you're interested in that. Also with these grants, there's match required for them. So you need to bring a cost share along with the grant money to do these projects. Formal applications to apply for these grants. And then also with these grants, limited application timeline and application time periods. So they kind of come and go. But if, if you think this meets your criteria and interested, be more than welcome to chat with you about possibilities and potentially getting some work done on the ground. That's kind of the, the last thing I have about wildfire preparedness. One thing I wanted to point out too is Douglas for Tussock moth, which is an insect that's kind of been going on around the Buffalo Creek area. I have some publications in the back, be more than welcome to talk to anybody about that insect that can give you those publications. That's all I have. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Good information. Okay, next we have Bobby Baca. She is, boy, long titles, Director of Property Casualty and Title Consumer Services, and she's with the Division of Insurance, Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies, I think better known as DORA, right? Okay, here you go, Bobby.
Thank you. As Shirley said, I'm Bobby Baca, and I've been with the Department of Regulatory Agencies for 18 years now. Before I get into the meat of the preparedness portion of those, my presentation, I wanted to tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. So the Division of Insurance is one of nine in regulatory insurance divisions within the Department of Regulatory Agencies. We've been around since 1968, but we've been protecting consumers since 1877. Some of the other divisions are Division of Banking, Civil Rights, Financial Services, Division of Professions and Occupations, Real Estate, Regulatory Reform, and the Public Utilities Commission. All of the divisions within DORA are dedicated to preserving the integrity of the marketplace and promoting a fair and competitive business environment in Colorado. So what do we do? At the Division of Insurance, I have a team of now five members, six members, I'm sorry, that handle consumer complaints. They, we take any type of complaint regarding property and casualty insurance and title insurance, which was just recently added to my, my long title. We are under the direction of Commissioner Salazar, who is an appointed position by the governor. We have 12 distinct sections within the division. We are charged with making sure the insurance companies remain solvent and can pay claims. We license the insurance professionals. We make sure that they comply with Colorado statutes and their policy provisions. That's just about all of it in a nutshell. So what my section does is we assist individual consumers. We take your complaints, whether it be over the telephone, via email, via fax, you can walk into our office and sit down with any one of our staff. We have our property and casualty section, as well as a life and health section. So if you have any questions about health insurance, your life insurance, annuities, we have consumer services staff that can help you with that as well. We investigate those consumer complaints, we write letters to the insurance companies, we get your side of the issue, we get their side of the issue, and then we determine whether there's any violations of Colorado state law or their policy contract. We answer questions, we educate consumers. A lot of times, it's just a matter of asking, calling and asking, does your, will your policy cover something? Or like, my insurance company is asking me to do this, can they do that? And we, we spend a lot of time on the phone with consumers, educating them. We explain what your rights are under your policy contract and what your responsibilities are under your policy contract. An insurance policy is a, a policy of indemnification, and you have duties under that policy just as the insurance company does. We have educational material, I have some material at the back table, that if you would like any of it. And for the fiscal year 2014-15, we saved Colorado consumers about 4.2 million in property or homeowners and auto saving, consumer savings. And that could be from getting a claim paid, or getting a policy reinstated, or getting a refund back. There's a number of ways that we can, that we help consumers get their money back. So before I get into the preparedness piece, I wanted to talk a little bit about House Bill 13-1225, which was, went through the legislature obviously three years ago. Some of the provisions of that bill were effective May of 2013, most of them were effective January of 2014, and then there was one piece of it that was effective January of 2015. The bill was sponsored by Representative Levy and Senator Nicholson from the Boulder County area, and was primarily in response to the Gulf of Wildfires, the Lower North Fork Fire, the Waldo Canyon Fire, the Four Mile Fire, and the High Park Fire. Some of the key changes to the law that, that affected, affect the insurance companies and homeowners is that some of the requirements that insurance companies must now offer you, for instance, they have to offer you at least one year, and they have to include at least one year of additional living expense in your homeowner policy, and they have to offer at least two years, 24 months worth of coverage. So if you, a lot of homeowners who lost their properties, particularly in the Boulder areas, and I think even down here where it took longer than, it might have taken 18 months or 24 months or 36 months to rebuild, those, the companies now have to offer 24 months to additional living expense for that. They have to offer... They have to offer additional and extended replacement cost coverage of at least 20% if you have a replacement cost policy, and they have to offer law and ordinance coverage of 10%. Again, one of the big issues that we found in Boulder County was that people didn't, they didn't have this law and ordinance coverage, and because there were specific ordinances that had been passed since they, since they had built their homes and everything, they were, they ended up being underinsured. An insurer must provide a written notice of any policy contract changes. So you should, if they change the coverage of your policy, if they change a deductible, they need to provide you a written notification of that. They have to make available upon your request a copy of your policy. Another big issue that we heard after the fires was that you didn't have, that consumers didn't have their policies, and they were having a difficult time getting them from their companies. Insurers also must consider, subject to their own underwriting requirements, the estimates from a contractor on replacement cost value. So if a company comes in and says your home is valued at $250,000, but you have a contractor that says it's really worth $300,000, they need to consider that. And, I have eight minutes. Am I already at that?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. I gotta get moving. Let's move on. I am so sorry. Okay, we won't talk about the claims, and we will, the premium comparison survey, we do a comparison survey every year. One of the things that I wanted to talk about is that there are a lot of insurance companies out there that are writing homeowners' insurance. And we get a lot of calls that says, I can't find any insurance, but there are 95 companies out there that are willing to write it with some restrictions. They, they do require that you mitigate and minimize your risk. They, you know, to be prepared, you want to complete a home inventory form, keep your valuable papers in a safe location, probably off premises, so that in the event of a fire, you don't lose those papers, but you want to keep your, a copy of your insurance policy. I heard mention of prescriptions. If you have regular prescriptions, keep copies of those. Be proactive about clearing your, about clearing your space. Insurance companies are gonna require defensible space if they're gonna write your policy. And check, clear the trees, tree limbs, pine needles, brush, that stuff from around your property. One other thing I wanted to touch on really quick is non-renewals. I did have, was told that there are some concerns about homeowners being non-renewed up here. Colorado laws don't address whether or not an insurance company can non-renew your property. They do have to follow their underwriting guidelines, but if you no longer meet those, that underwriting criteria, they can non-renew you with at least a three-day notice of non-renewal. So if that happens, you can reach out to us. Sometimes we can contact the company, we can get them to renew your policy with an increased deductible, or maybe they just require an additional mitigation, and if you do that mitigation, they'll renew your policy. Or they may just say, no, flat out, no, we're not gonna write it anymore, and if that's the case, you just need to shop around. I did bring some homeowner or buyer's shopping guides that kind of gives you some information about comparing insurance companies and coverages and whatnot. So I do apologize for speeding through this. I didn't realize I was taking so much time. I usually talk really fast, so thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Yeah, it does go fast. Time goes fast. Okay, next, on your agenda, it shows that we've got Brad Herman gonna be here, Crime Prevention Deputy. However, he's gotten a lot better looking. And we now have Janie Gonda is here to talk to us, and she's also Crime Prevention Deputy. Janie.
Thank you, Shirley. Better looking, that's nice. With a show of hands, how many of you have 72-hour packs ready to go? Okay, if you don't, what I asked for you tonight before you leave, stop by my booth. I have an example, shadow boxes of what should be in your kit. It's really important that you have that, especially living in the mountain areas. We are faced with wildfires. Even people are saying that. With the moisture and all that, we should be good. We're never good, because we have one season with a ton of moisture, and then we have a lot of overgrowth. So don't be that person in denial. Make sure you're ready to go. Consider that if I knock on your door, one of my partners knocks on your door, you have 15 minutes to get out. Are you ready, if that's necessary? Can we find your address easily? And mark if we've been at your house or not? Five things to consider, we call it the five P's. Your people, your pets, your pills or prescriptions, your photos, and your important paperwork. Make sure you have all that ready to go. Just makes life a little bit easier for you and for us. Stop by my booth, I have an emergency preparedness guide that has the whole checklist, and just consider those things when you're driving home tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Okay, next we have Skip Shirley, who is Fire Chief of Inter Canyon Fire Protection District. Skip.
Good evening. I am Skip Shirley, I'm the Chief of Inter Canyon, as Shirley just said. I want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the changes that we've had recently, some of the things we're doing, and some of the things we can do for you. We are a full-bonter fire department, and this year in January, we hired our first full-time paid chief in 62 years of our existence. We are 52 square miles, and we run 15 pieces of apparatus out of five stations. If you don't know our district, it starts at Hillview, which is just above Myers Ranch. We run down to about Tiny Town, and in Deer Creek, we go down to where the Lockheed plant is, and then out south, Kestrel, we just kind of go out to No Man's Land. We run three ALS ambulances, and again, we have those with all volunteers. We have, always are looking for new volunteers. We have several opportunities for people to join if they so choose to. We have a firefighter track where we will send you to a fire academy, and you'll earn all your state certifications. If you are not into that, but you like the EMS side of things, we have an EMS-only track where we'll send you to become an EMT or a paramedic. Those are probably 70% of the calls that we run are EMS, so it's, we're always looking for new EMTs and paramedics. You could be an in-district volunteer, so live within our boundaries, or you could be an out-of-district volunteer. In the last two years, we started a new out-of-district program. We have BOMs set up. You can come and do shifts if you so choose. We run about 350 to 400 calls a year. A little bit about me, I'm a Colorado native. I was born and raised in Lakewood, went to Grand High School, graduated from Colorado State University, Enoch. I have lived in the Conifer area for 20 years, and I've been on the department for nine years. Some of the things that we can do for you guys is we're willing to come out and do some talks about defensible space at your house, or home safety assessments. We plan on doing a lot of open houses. Again, we're looking for a lot of volunteers, a lot of barbecuing with our neighbors, that sort of thing. And last year, we brought in seven new volunteers in May of 2015. This May, we'll bring in another 10 volunteers, and we're gonna make another effort in the fall to bring in more people. I really want to talk about our members. I'm honored, I'm humbled by these members and the people that, that are on our department. These are people that are willing to get up at 2:00 in the morning and go and help someone that they've never met. Truly incredible people. If you have any interest in joining the department, either as an in-district or out-of-district firefighter, I'll be in the back, at the table, if anyone wants to answer any questions, or talk, talk about the volunteer program that we have. We've had some really incredible opportunities this past year. We had a member of, a long-term member of our district who passed away, but in her estate, they paid for a new ambulance for us. So this replaced one of our ambulances that was at the end of its existence, of its, of its life for us, and it allowed us to purchase a fully stocked ALS ambulance. It's a really beautiful rig, and we have a lot of the plaques in her name on it, so we're really proud of that. So again, thank you, I'm giving a little sign right there. So I appreciate the time to talk to you, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to come and answer me back. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. And now we have the Chief of Elk Creek Fire Department, Bill McLaughlin. Bill.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. So last year, we were talking about a proposal that we had, that was to update the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for the Conifer area. And I wanted to just talk very briefly about the progress that we're making on that, and some things that you may be somewhat involved in, or may encounter out there. So the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is essentially a plan that looks at the risk to the community, and suggests ways that we can reduce the risk from wildfire to the community, both on a large scale, what we call a landscape scale, which is a lot of what, you know, the major projects, the big fuel projects in Staunton, in Beaver Ranch, and some of the other areas are, and also at how we can reduce the risk at individual properties. We were fortunate that we did get grant funding to put this whole project together, and it's actually off to a really good start. One of the steps that we're involved in right now is a risk assessment. And that risk assessment involves looking at all of the properties throughout the entire district, and using a standardized scale to, you know, basically assess what, you know, risks there are to each individual home. And this is an example here of one of the neighborhoods. We also have King's Valley up on the poster in the back, so if any of you live in King's Valley, you can go ahead and take a look at that, and, you know, I can answer any questions about that process. As we get, you know, this completed, it's also going to be available to you, so you'll be able to go and online and look at your property, and it'll basically say, you know, what it is that creates a particular risk, and how you can go about minimizing that risk. This is going to be really useful for us, not just in terms of helping you determine what to do, but also in terms of helping us, you know, justify grant funding for those projects, either on individual homes or on the landscape scale. So that's gonna be a really useful tool. Now, there's a, you know, been some questions about whether or not, you know, having this information up there would impact your ability to get fire insurance or, or to pay for it. Basically, I can tell you, they've already looked. You know, they're not gonna use our assessment, because they've already done those assessments. Now, different insurance companies use different systems. The largest one is a company called CoreLogic, and they won't even share with us how they do the, make the decision about individual properties, you know, what they're looking at, it's proprietary. But they do actually put out a good report every year about the wildfire risk across the country. If you get a chance to look at the 2015 report, that actually features our area as one of their areas across the country that they looked at. And unfortunately, for good reason. The CoreLogic study, you know, puts homes into different categories. And one of the things, looking at the last several years, that you can see is that in San Diego County, there were 372 homes in the entire county in the highest risk. In Los Angeles County, about 9,000. But if you jump down to just Conifer, Evergreen, Bailey, we have 11,000 homes in the highest risk category, putting us number one in the country for being the highest risk for a major loss from wildfire. And that is why you're getting those non-renewals or those requirements to mitigate. You know, as a fire department, we field calls either from residents or from insurance companies daily on this. Now, we can either continue the way we are, and, you know, have more expensive home insurance, and have it, will be more difficult to get, or we can use that information that we're getting about where those risks are, and try to reduce those risks, and knock us out of that category of being the most dangerous place. So that's really a big focus of what we're doing with this project right now. One of the other things that we're doing in terms of our assessment of the community and how we can help make this community safer includes a survey. We want to know, you know, what you think about, what your concerns are, whether or not you can do the work, and whether or not, you know, financial help or physical help is going to help you out with that. There are copies of those in the back, and we also will have other ways of getting, getting at that. We're gonna get it online. We're really gonna publicize it well. So please fill out that survey, and if you do see, you know, a brush truck driving around your neighborhood, stopping out on the street, that is our specialist who's doing those assessments. We've gotten a few calls from those. It's not an emergency, he's just going through, analyzing the risk areas around the area. Finally, in the end, what we're hoping to get from this is not just a public education tool, but also a tool that's gonna help us develop better evacuation routes, develop shaded fuel breaks to protect communities, improve our capabilities as a fire department to, you know, identify water sources for helicopters or for fire engines, and really to just, you know, set us up so that the next time a wildfire does come through the community, we can respond to it better, and you as individual residents will be more likely to have your home survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. So everything we've been talking tonight is pretty important. Okay, and our last speaker, and we are gonna get done on time, and maybe even a little early. Colorado State Representative Tim Leonard is here, and he's gonna talk a little bit what's been happening in the legislature this year. Tim.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you. You know, the brain can only endure what the seat can endure, so I will make sure you stay on time. But what we've done in the legislature this year is hopefully a lot that Chief McLaughlin said. There's been three bills that have already been passed and signed by the governor dealing with wildfire. The first one was actually a resolution, and it basically gave some pretty strong direction to the federal government to better manage the federal government lands, the state forest areas, for fire mitigation, getting the fuel out. And it was really just a push to say that we're very concerned here in Colorado that federal lands need to have fuel mitigation. And so that was a push, not that it had much teeth in it, but the other two bills, another one that was adding broadcast burn to the list of fire mitigation items to be able, again, to get fuel out. And so that's been pretty important to add that to the list, because otherwise, it's really just slash and being able to take fuel out, but broadcast burns make residents a little nervous, because we always feel like it could get uncontrolled. But the testimony was pretty significant on how they're able to do that, and they gave some examples on, you know, not having a starboard lightning burn. Some of them are having a lightning strike started and then keep it going, and many people were very disappointed in that. It much, they haven't much more control for the environment. So that was one that was added, because we know that that's important. And then, but the third one was actually, had more teeth in it. There's a million dollars that's been set aside for fire mitigation, high-risk areas, and being able to draw the fuel out of the fire. This took $200,000 and specifically allocated it to be able to salvage wood and trees that were either diseased or insect-infested, and to be able to get those out of the forest. And this is really the first time that move has been made. All that pine beetle and everything else, a lot of legislators, especially here in the forested area, but also Western Slope and Grand County, everybody's really said, come on, enough is enough. These trees are gonna start rotting if they're seven years standing, so let's get them out of there. And so we convinced the rest of the legislature to be able to pull that out, and that was one of the sponsors of that, because we've got to get fuel out. I'm sorry that I was late. We've been doing some really long hours in the legislature for the last three weeks here, until the three weeks were out. But I really want to hear about slash. And so I'll hopefully talk to Brad afterwards. Because that's really our number one thing, is to be able to get slash out. And I'd like to see what I could do in the legislature to help that. But it's really going to be a county-driven issue. And whatever I can do to help coordinate that, that'd be great. The last issue I'll just talk about, that seemed to be on everybody's minds. It was for me, because I sponsored this one too, which was rain barrels, being able to collect some rainwater coming down from our roofs and everything else. Being able to capture it. Lots of negotiation. We finally ended up with two 55-gallon drums, so 110 gallons, with some restrictions. And I think they're very in keeping with water law, which is, as most of us know, that water that lands on a roof is not ours. It belongs downstream, could be Nebraska, could be anywhere else. But we convinced the rest of our legislators, especially the Western Slope folks, that we can capture it on our property and then be able to use it outside, can't use it inside. Really, not even domestic animals. It's supposed to be water, gardens, even our lawns. Because what does that mean? It means it's been two weeks delayed before getting out of our lawns anyway. Right now, you can actually use it for tomato plants, et cetera. And if you use it, it goes right back in the stream in underground aquifers, and we'll never miss it. So that's been signed by the Governor too. So now we can capture rainwater over and over again, store it, you know, 110 gallons worth, use it as you need it outside, and then recapture it again. So that's been a pretty good thing.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, well, I just have a couple of announcements. First of all, just so everybody knows, this Saturday, April 23rd, the Nine Health Fair will be at Our Lady of the Pines Catholic Church from 7:00 to 12:00. So if you haven't already been to one of those, make sure you get there. April 30th and May 1st is the Mountain Area Home and Garden Show. It's at Evergreen High School this year. So always, always a great event. Don't forget the May 7th, Mountain Resource Center, celebrating the Kentucky Derby. Tickets back in the back. And also Bookie at the Barden on May 13th. That's going to be at Evergreen Memorial Park. So those are two fundraisers for Mountain Resource Center, a great cause. Then July 30th and 31st is the elevation celebration with the 5 and 10K runs. So lots happening. I just want to especially thank, again, Nancy Staub, State Farm Insurance, for their community support of tonight's town hall meeting. And thank you to all of you who are here. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing these if you weren't here. And at least get your neighbors for the next ones. And we'll see you this summer at all of the events going on in Conifer. And then the next town hall meeting will be September 21st, next fall. Thank you so much. Enjoy all of the presentations and all of the brochures out there.